Alright, I'll be everyone, one more quarter round to the December meeting of the planning board for town of Lewiston.
Chris says it.
I can do it.
Okay.
Pat Baker.
Here.
Sam Wecht, Sarah Wetter.
Here.
Bill Tazak.
Here.
Bill Berg.
Here.
Bill Conrad.
Here.
Ron Pratt.
Here.
Ken Loeb.
Here.
Okay, we have one item that has been removed from the agenda, the Golden River Road property. So we move right on to the, um, the road application, Mr. Ryder. The operation site plan and change of use of the rest of the property. And here to represent Mr. Ryder. Hearing none, we'll move on. The sketch plan for Christ Centered Properties in Niagara Street. Information and discussion. So anyone, Mr. Wecht?
Good evening, Joseph Gianna with Mr. Wecht.
Uh, you have a call here? It's Damon Addis.
Paul Wecht, Christ Centered Properties. Is it my whole address or you want the...
It doesn't matter.
Uh, if you can tell them we're going to the board, sir. Joseph Gianna, this is Terry.
Alright, um, wanted to just have a review for us, just a scope of your projects.
We sold a lot we submitted, um, basically we just want to split it in half. To look at the surveys provided. To your left of the survey is a black building which is a separate lot. All we want to do is that lot that has a concrete black building. So to your left of the survey is a concrete block building. All we want to do, that's one lot, but basically the building is on the whole lot. We want to take one foot, we just want to move the west one foot over. So that the building is wholly on that lot, whatever happened 150 years ago. That golden door of mine. So we just want to move that one foot. But the next lot to your right, the rest of the survey, that's the lot we want to basically split off. You want to take, you know, rolling from the west line. We want to take about 100, 100 feet to make that one lot. And then leave the rest of the lot. So the corner lot would have one building on it. And the remaining lot would have the metal building and the two-story frame building.
Those old...
The old, yeah. But that, the corner building is just a whole lot.
There's not, there's not... What would the, um, what would the use be for that building?
Well, honestly, there's personally, you know, my son, I just, you know. I'd like to put an old Bronco in here in his lawnmower and snow bill and just some ice and that, you know. Your garage is never big enough. Especially when I'm putting our Christmas decorations. Strictly personally, there's nothing to get rid of it out.
Right, so on the assessment, on the general assessment form. In terms of, um, this is a brief description of the property on page one of the, um, a brief description of the proposed action. The last sentence, the only impact to be a creation of a separate parcel for property tax purposes. Is that, is that unintentional or is it...
No, just, I mean, nothing changed.
Okay, I didn't want to read anything into that.
No, I'm not trying to say my own thing. I feel probably a bit more.
Alright, um. You said it's just going to be your first release?
Yes, sir.
Alright, now we're out.
Yes, sir, guaranteed.
Okay. Any questions from the board? What's the underlying purpose for going to all this?
If it's all your property and you want to just use that one building for storage, you can do that right now, right? I can do it right now, but with the possibility of later on down the road and maybe somebody would want to buy the other properties. Uh, in honesty, sir, I just, um, I've been a landlord long enough. I just like to, you know, rent some properties, but we don't have a lawnmower. The gentleman just moved out, uh, our house, Trucking, Bob Shugert's. So he moved out and I said, eh, it's just nice to keep it for our own personal use.
And also the board. What, um... I guess one of my questions is going to be part of it. I mean, there's a, you know, there are, there's obviously setbacks that were made when this whole thing was created.
The only, the only new thing we're really doing is splitting that lot.
Right.
And there's still almost 40 feet. The only new yard we're recreating is there, I'm calling it the yard if you look at the code public. Basically, there's 80 feet between those two buildings. So each building you got to have almost 40 feet. And I think those are well over whatever limit, you know, the, you have to have a minimum yard in that district. I think that's well beyond for both of them.
I've got a few issues. My name is Tom Signo, I'm the town attorney, gentlemen.
What can we call on him?
You, oh, you, I was...
Anything, Mr. Signo?
Thank you, Mr. Gianna. The issues that I see with your plan are that you've got a, you've got a piece of property here that already has been grandfathered in in terms of how close everything is to your, to your property lines. And when you consider that as a complete parcel, it's got all of these different buildings on it. But if you go ahead and try to split it, you run into, you're no longer grandfathered in. You've got new issues as to each parcel as to whether or not those buildings would fit within the required setbacks. You know, you've got buildings that are, that would potentially have no, no setbacks at all, or barely any setbacks on the back edges. And I think you, I think if you split it, you would lose your grandfathering in of those area setbacks. And you'd have to, for that issue, I think you'd end up having to go to the ZBA to make a request that they allowed for that. And I don't know, that, the CBA makes their own decision, but I think you might have some trouble there, um, in terms of getting that approval. The other, there's a couple other things too, though, that I think you should be aware of. That building on the left that you're saying you keep some, get Bronco in or whatever, uh, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't have water and it doesn't have sewer.
Yes, sir.
So as of right now, the way that it would be looked at as a whole parcel is that's a necessary building to this other parcel. But now when you're splitting it, putting it on to a new lot in and of itself, it's not a necessary building anymore. So now you've got just a pole barn on a, on a parcel. Which isn't not normally allowed within the town. So then you'd be thinking, not only would I need area variances with regard to that, I'd need to have a use variance as well. This is another application to the zoning board. Use variances are very, very difficult to obtain, um, just to let you know. The final thing is the fact that that building, yeah, because it doesn't have those, it doesn't have the water and it doesn't have sewer. That would have to be contemplated as well. So I would think that what you need to do if you want to do this is contemplate whether or not you think you can get through the planning board and the zoning board with regard to those applications. And I think you'd have a lot of trouble doing so, to be honest with you. But you'll lose your grandfathering in. I mean, everything is so tight on these pieces of property that you, unfortunately, the way that the code is drafted, you don't get to just keep it and now cut, cut pieces off about a new vision being applied to it. There's a new site plan review that would have to occur for each one. So anytime really, we have something that's coming up tonight, actually, for someone that's, that's seeking to do something a little bit different within the town on their business parcel, and they have to make an application for a site plan review for this board to review it, it's on a different application tonight, but that would be similar, you'd have to go through that process as well. So it wouldn't just be subdivision. It would be subdivision, site plan review of both of them, and both of them would probably have to go before the ZBA for both area variance and use variances. You'd lose all of your grandfathering in, of what they have.
To do this, we definitely have to lose our grandfather.
Again, I don't see any way around that.
My thought was centered so much room between those two buildings.
Well, yeah, there, but what about the setbacks here and setbacks here? I mean, the buildings are right on the street.
But that's where I was wondering, that's where I thought the grandfather could still get in because we haven't changed it. It must have been a while before, you know.
Well, 150 years ago.
Yeah. Actually, it's a pretty building, wasn't it, 150, when you closed?
I mean, that's how I view it, you know, unless, unless there was something else for me to look at in terms of, you know, law offsets, the case law or something that you could look into to say that this, this doesn't, you'd go to keep these setbacks and keep this grandfathering in. The way that I would believe that this goes is as soon as you try to do something on this, everything has to come into compliance or you have to get the proper variances from the zoning board to allow for it. Which would be actually left in the loop.
So we need to look at whether there's any way to, what if we get past the grandfather?
It's a, it's a big...
I think we still have the other issue of no plumbing and open, or...
Right, and that's right.
But that, I always think we have a variance, it's just a...
Yeah, but if you're asking just to put up a use, if you're looking just to put up basically a storage building on a single parcel...
I'm not looking to put it up, it's already there.
No, I know, but if you're looking to use it as storage, it doesn't even have water or sewage on it. It's, it's a storage building, it would not normally be allowed in the town.
It would still require a special use permit.
And then you'd require a special use permit for that. Special use permits are, are very difficult to obtain. Area variances, the zoning board appeals has some ability to, to make some judgment calls. Special use permits, there's a list of five things, if you don't check every one of them, and they're really tough, you don't, you don't get it by, by law. That's literally how the law is written up. And I just, like, in the state of New York, special use variances, it's like less than 5% of them ever get approved. They're 90, 95% disapproval on those.
I got one once, one used in years ago.
Right, like, for example. Bill knows of one ever that he's seen happen.
Yeah.
In terms of use variance.
So we have to talk to, to, along the way, but what we have, you're going to figure out the transfer. Yes, we have talked a lot, what we have to go, you know, in terms of...
To make it not, yeah, potentially, possibly. That would be what you'd need to consider.
Okay.
Alright.
Just ask a few more questions. Tim, did you want to say anything?
My whole, my whole thing is basically, if, if you move it forward with a split, the use is going to basically be everything. So depending on what the use is, if it's going to be a personal storage building, or if it's going to be whatever in the middle, to me, that is kind of going to dictate the path. So. It's, I mean, it's, it's a tough parcel because everything is basically right on the lot line, which was okay when those Caucan's number company, 18 years ago, before the zoning code was in play, but now it's a little more difficult.
Mr. Martin, you still... Did you have anything that you wanted to mention on this one?
The only thing, you know, I was going to mention, sort of parallel to what Paul, the attorney of Mr. Masters says, you know, if, if they go through it and establish these as separate lots, these buildings are going to pretty much have to stay exactly as they are. If they try to sell it off to somebody else at a later date and change it into another building, it's just not going to work. It's going to be, um, just parking, um, you know, the new regulations for a change of occupancy, to change a building into something other than what it was originally created, it would make it extremely prohibitive. So, number one.
And I think we're okay with that because we don't want to have a change of use.
We've got bigger plans, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear all of them first.
Anyone else have any comment, anybody in the audience here? Other comments or questions from the board before?
Yeah, please split that up. Can he use this for his storage?
I mean, if everything that I can set fell into place, then I'd actually...
If they just split it up, if they wanted to start a business or sell it, the people that are going to buy it have to go through that. That's the way I'm thinking. You know what I mean?
That's not the way that the town code is drafted. Your, your town code is drafted such that even to split a single parcel one time, you have to come before this planning board. Not every town code is drafted that way, but that's why they're here today.
Yeah.
Is because of that reason. So it's not something that, from my view as a town's attorney, that you'd be able to just do and kick down the road to it to a new buyer to deal with.
Well, you need someone to deal with.
To comply, to comply with it to get it, to get it right as they're going through with it.
And then we could be blamed for not doing, you know, our diligence and creating a situation, um, which would cause him to feel...
Yeah, I mean, I think all of those things need to be considered, really. But you guys tonight, for us, you know, you'd be just considering whether or not you're going to classify it. You could take a motion to classify it, but I don't think you could have, I don't, I wouldn't recommend making a, taking a motion to approve it for the town board without having all of these other things considered, whether or not the applicant wants to go through with all that.
Maybe classify them as something...
Yeah, you could probably do that and then table it to see if the applicant wants us to, to move forward at a later date. And we'll just table it for now, would probably be the right approach.
Anyone want to make that motion?
Would it be worth classifying it here this evening or...
It's not necessary. It won't get them extra for one way or the other. And to be honest with you, because of all of, because of all of the complications, it probably wouldn't be classified as a minor subdivision. A major subdivision is anything more than four lots and/or anything that has a lot of complicated issues with it. So you, I, I would recommend you don't classify it right now. If they classified it as anything, I would recommend it as a major, and you don't want that classification yet. That, that changes everything for you. So what you want to do is have them table it, and you guys need, want to think about how you might want to proceed.
Well, as far as the clock ticking for them?
If you table it, the clock's not going to tick for anything.
That's what I prefer, I don't want to get you guys...
I'd like to make a motion to table.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll table, we'll table the action for now and just come back when we get through with it.
Thank you.
So you're right there, Tim. Alright, thank you. Well, let's move on to who the board would prefer. Just move on to the helipad that, uh, St. Mary's.
This is called, happy audience, everybody. Ned Gerald is from the Gavin McGovern Bridge, one of the address, East 10th and St. Paul. Accompanied by Victor O'Brien and Chad Paul Hager. Chad Paul Hager is from Catholic Health. Victor O'Brien is the architect. CJ Earlough, uh, from St. Mary's Hospital is also here. And we're here with the detailed drive, uh, aspects of this, uh, project. The drawings that we presented to the board this evening, they show the elevation, demolition, drainage and lighting, per urination. I think CS 100 is the overall site plan. I'm sure I don't really have to repeat very much for the board. We were here for the concept phase, and it was approved, the recommendation approval was approved by the town board. And just trying to first get our elevations shot from our surveyor. And we're back now with the detailed drive. Nothing changed, we're worried about parking spaces. Presently, there's 736 parking spaces. 696 are required, um, based upon occupancy and use. One of the legends, I think, on the, uh, overall site plan shows the allocation of the parking spaces. But the, uh, we're going to lose 40 parking spaces with the construction of the helipad. So we've got a lot of 696, which still meets the minimum requirement, um, for parking for the hospital and the daycare center also, and the medical arts building also.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Is there any contingency plan for future parking?
Like to expand parking?
Pardon me?
Do you mean to expand parking or...
Expand parking if needed, because it is, it's pretty tight.
Yeah, there are actually spots available, we had to, there's certainly some grassy areas, I believe, to the, uh, probably to the west.
There's some grass areas in the west that you could use for parking. Uh, there's also some parking right along Military Road that you could possibly add a little bit of parking there as well. It, it is pretty, the site is pretty full. But at this point in time, we don't see the hospital standing at all at this juncture, um, nor the medical arts building. You know, we don't see any major additions coming in the near future. So we shouldn't have the need based upon the building as it stands today, the need to expand parking.
Mr. Signo, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, really. So the role for the planning board tonight, you guys have already approved their concept plan. It went to the town board where it was approved. And now they're here with their detailed plan. You, you really just need to make a, a motion as to whether or not the detailed plan is in substantial conformity with the concept plan. And if it is, um, then it's recommended for approval to the town board.
The, the only thing that shifted a little bit was the approach angle for the flight, um, and the departure angle over the...
Oh, no.
And that, no, it was, it was a matter of there were some light poles at the duty free that we didn't have complete clearance.
So it's down, down along here, this departure, it was shifted this way. And it went over the duty free, but they've got the tall light poles along here that we can't have those in the approach stage. So, so we just shifted, what's actually the departure, we just shifted to work on the gas, that's...
The departure angle will be more so over our parking lot than over duty free.
Tim, I'm sorry. The easement along the bottom, the 25-foot easement, for the children, to St. Mary's Children's, the child, children's...
The daycare center.
Could you remind me again of what, because I mean, I was just encroaching upon it.
Uh, National Drive. It's the electric service to the daycare center.
Yep.
Is it going to be okay?
As far as I know, it, it, Victor, Victor should have that on his drawing.
It, it, it's shown on the drawing, but, but really, I mean, where, where we do encroach, it's already paved there. You know, so we're, we're really not, we're, we're adding a little bit of pavement, you know, just, it's a long year. So we really have, we don't have any...
Is it the, of the, you know, the fence posts would be on it, sorry.
And we have a...
And then one light pole.
True. I like that. I think there was a light pole there anyway. Yeah, but yeah. Yeah, that's one pole. This is their own. Well, that, that was my thought, this is... I think this came up before, it's their own utility, so...
Yeah. It's our, it's our...
It's your problem now, it'll be your problem eventually.
Well, it's your own utilities, then. Why would they, you know, it was 401 now. Unless this was a, was this a separate...
Separate parcel, separate entity.
It's a separate feed, it's the daycare's not fed from the hospital. It has a separate feed from there. So it's for a feeder from the grid in some building.
I've heard rumors.
And up until the meter, grid will always have front easement on their property. They, we have another easement that comes up from Military going to the new substationing and Dr. Carter's. That was a new easement when we did the electrical project.
I mean, I think I'm real very happy with what's been done. I just don't, I want to make sure that we don't create some kind of, um, situation with those structures that are easement. Important or not important, I don't know. To Tom?
Yeah.
And what's your opinion, do we need something from Niagara Mohawk saying that that's okay? I mean, overall, I'm very happy, I think that's the more things that's...
I wouldn't think so. If it's Niagara Mohawk easement over their property, I don't think the town needs to worry about it. It's not the town easement. If it was the town easement, I would probably personally pull the, the language of the easement and make sure that it's in the deed properly and that, you know, people can put parking lots over easements or driveways over easements.
Oh, sure.
So, um...
Fences and light poles.
Right. I would think, is there, those fences and light poles are not already on in that area? Is it new?
Not the fence, but a little...
There's a light pole there.
There's light poles there. Along the edge of the parking, if not now, there is this light pole along that edge of parking.
Those are going to be replaced, just the new head or...
Those are, yeah, so the one that's there is too tall. And so these are new lights, that'll be a shorter pole, and you'll have a different throw to eliminate the pad, um, without being in the air space.
Are you going to have to replace the base for it, the foundation?
Yeah, that one, yeah, that one will be, there's a couple of them, light poles are moving around here because we have to get them out of the approach.
And that easement was relatively new. I want to say that easement was about 2015 when they did the addition onto the daycare center, which is shortly after Catholic Health, but just not St. Mary's.
Actually, um, where it was first proposed, we've made a lot of work in, uh, in urban fire aspects. We hope that away from the Mercy entrance, we'll be away from the hospital. The hospital's been cooperated, improved in some of their fire lines for us. Pretty much, uh, happy with what we're doing, but...
Good to go. Sneak out of here.
Did you need me?
No, we already got her.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board or comments for the applicant?
Bill, it'll be okay, I'll make the motion, I'll move to the, uh...
Do you want to pull the...
I'll circle it.
Bill, do you see them?
Did you, did you want to pull the audience if there's anybody who wants to speak for or against it?
Everybody's really dressed nicely, so I don't know if... If there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against this project, which is St. Mary's and the helipad, please stand up, come to my... Hearing none, your motion against it?
I'd like a motion to approve the, uh, the updated plan.
I'll second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just want to...
Thank you, thank you, Mary.
Yeah, that's right.
I knew I could get that out of the... I think you can get it, but... I've got to track around a lot of...
I just said, sorry, the light...
Yeah, I remember that. I remember...
Now it's going to allow it to be... The road class, we're... Mr. Ryder?
Yeah.
Are you alone, anyone for, is that you or are you...
A lot now.
Name an address.
Steve Ryder, 1451 Ridge Road. Project 1437.
Um, kind of basically give us your synopsis of what you're trying to do.
Well, um, I see you have a plan in front of you.
Well, um, I see you have a plan in front of you. Um, what's, originally, uh, what, and, and, well, that's what, we'll get here with Tim to make sure I understand properly. Uh, originally, we had planned to put several buildings parallel each other. And then there was one building that was gonna be on the Hillview property. Both of which are in my brother and sister and my name under Schulz Art Project, which is my mom's name. Uh, they're all storage buildings, outdoor storage buildings. But, uh, we, we kinda looked at maybe splitting that building that was behind Hillview in half. Instead of just having one building, that way I could provide more parking for the Hillview restaurant behind that property. And also give me an access, uh, a one-way route from, from the parking lot from Hillview to go inside and make a, make a, an access, access out. We made up most, all our lanes are at least twenty-six feet, because that's what the fire company has told me to do. And, uh, it's really based on what we're doing, our, our site plan really hasn't changed other than we split the one building in half. We planned on running parallel buildings, uh, our, when we went for our concept approval a long time ago to show the way the building would be laid out. And, uh, and the other, uh, the Hillview, uh, the bar building. And we call it a bar building instead of a restaurant, except the other one's a restaurant too. I get confused.
Sure.
Yeah, the bar building, we'd like to, uh, lower the usage from a, a restaurant into indoor storage. Uh, we, we know that we have to work with the fire inspector, the building inspector, and the law superintendent for the sprinkler system. We know that, uh, originally we had planned, but we didn't, uh, because we owned all the properties. And we combined the bar property with the storage property. We had planned an easement there. We could still do an easement. That's not a problem. But we, uh, when we, when the town authorized me to split the property, they made it so I had frontage, which is farther over by my mother's house. Uh, east of the, east, farther east on the east end of the property. Property's owned appropriately for it. It's all own business. Low impact, won't have any impact on, uh, uh, your water system, your sewer system. Won't have any impact on the school system. Uh, the current building we have is full. We have, we actually have a waiting list for units. And we just would like to continue our project at home. And we're trying to find a use for that bar building other than, uh, a restaurant. Restaurants have not succeeded there. There's been three or four attempts. And it is, I, I'll also like to say that you notice that we've, uh, re-sized Hillview, we put a new roof on, put new, uh, mechanicals in. We also, uh, are doing the same on the bar building. Started with the, on the size, doing some sizing. Part of our plan is to tear that front porch off and, and do a nicer, uh, presentation of that building. Please, when you drive by, look up though, because the colors don't match real well. They match our, uh, our, our scheme. I've been told several times. And I'm here to ask your question.
Um, why don't we start with the board? Um, any questions from the board, any comments?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll start. Um, I have, I guess, uh, some issues as far as with the, uh, fire lane in regards to those. Um, as you look right now, the property between the bar building and the restaurant, um, that's currently a fire lane.
Yes, ma'am.
But I understand at times, um, it gets a little muddled, um, as far as the parking for the Hillview and the restaurant. And then also too, um, you've got your other access on, uh, the other side of the Hillview. Now, my concern is that if you, um, continue on with the project, you're not gonna be able to get the, um, fire trucks, you know, back in there and then turned around. There's not a lot of maneuverability, especially back behind the restaurant. If you're gonna be pulling all those buildings closer.
Uh, I think, um, I mean, not to interrupt you or confuse the situation, but that's what I, that's why I'm making that access road. Uh, where the parking spots are, they had additional parking spots. We're putting a, a, a lane through there. Plus also, we've left the lane, a, a blacktop lane around the hole that used to be the driveway to my grandma's house that we have demolished. And, uh, we've left that open for access to the fire trucks. And that, uh, as far as muddled, um, I've talked to people at Hillview. I mean, I, if you want, I'll have, I'll call the police, take a check of them. It's no, it's no sort of, it's not us, it's, uh, it's not us as business owner, as property owners that are, uh, parking cars at, and, and it's mostly, uh, it's mostly delivery trucks and stuff like that. And they can, you know, I, I can talk to the operator of the restaurant, I can have the delivery truck, um, pull off to another side. All they have to do is shift to the left over there.
Because my other concern comes to as far as if, um, Hillview is, you know, stays as its own property. And then the whole storage unit area becomes its own property. If there's ever a decision to sell off the Hillview, we potentially created an issue.
Well, I, 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 it's, um, as I stated earlier, I'm more than welcome to, to make an easement there to, uh, to do the, uh, fire lane is not a problem. Or we can combine the two properties and then, uh, if, if we ever do get a separate offer for the Hillview, we can come to the board and approach the board on the proper access nego, if you want. That's my brother and sister, that's my brother and sister right there. Um, we met with Linda Johnson yesterday because, uh, we had some concerns about what we should do as far as tax manages properties and stuff like that. And, uh, and, and she told us how to combine the two properties. We did that originally at Tim's request. When we did the electricity for the, uh, storage building in the back, the bar building was not, was a separate parcel. We combined it as a, um, because we ran the electricity through the same meter. And, and, and Tim asked us to, that we combined the two, which we were happy to do. And we're happy to combine the two, uh, right now. In fact, my sister would probably thank you for doing that, because it would be easier for her to pay the taxes. So if, if, if that's a contingency that you want, I'll start on it tomorrow.
Okay, and then another question, um, that I had is that, uh, you are planning on doing, uh, open storage as far as for recreational vehicles, boats, whatnot?
Well, we're hoping that open storage goes away as we add more buildings.
Okay, so that's the future plan, is that it's not just these buildings? You wanna continue on?
Yes, our, our original presentation showed, uh, the site plan showed one building, but we, uh, all the facilities that were developed, for example, the drainage system and the lighting system was all, and, and, and the placement of the fire hydrant was for additional buildings.
Okay, so we do believe there's a special use isn't there for the open, that's what we were discussing earlier? For the, um, open air vehicles, like as far as the trailer.
There would normally be, so, Tom, Tom Seaman, I, I don't, I ha, I haven't seen, to be honest with you, I didn't get a chance to review it, the approval that you got in two thousand and sixteen. Did that application include an application for outdoor vehicle storage?
I don't know if we discussed it or not.
Okay. Uh, so, um, does this application include a provision that you're requesting for outdoor?
We, we showed the area.
Where can you show me? Well, because that shows the house that was demolished.
Yeah. On the one smaller plane, it shows an area for outdoor storage.
So, I do believe that for outdoor storage, you would need to get a special use permit. Oh, I see what you're, I can't really read that. So this, this block here? Oh, and these are the fire lines?
Yeah.
The, um.
You have a good version of this one.
Well, this fire lane goes, yeah, this fire lane goes through one of your buildings, right?
No, it's not.
Oh, oh, that's not a building. That's, that's on the line, the building. I gotcha. And then while, while we're looking at this thing, the, uh, your proposed revised boundary. That, is that, what is that? That's not.
That's our fence.
That's just a fence?
Yes.
That's just that you're just planning on moving the fence a little bit?
No, I can't. Um, the, the, that's a brick fence there, and it's a very steep drop. I could move the fence, but you and I would struggle to get it down there.
Why, I guess, why are you proposing a new boundary?
Oh, it's just the, that's, that's the property that we'll propose the boundary, that's all. You just wrote that. That's what it was on the original plan.
You're not in this application intending to split this, this eastern portion off? It's not a subdivision at all? Okay, I needed to be, I needed to be clear on that.
Tom, Tom, I'm sorry, you're, you're, I have the same question. The drawing is listed as a master plan. So that might be why some of the, the ways that some of the.
Yeah, we're taking off the old, the old plan.
So it's not, these aren't drawn for construction?
Okay.
No, no, we, we planned on for, in order, we have to give a detailed plan to get them. I mean, with the lighting and all that, 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 now's a good time, you can see what the lighting looks like, the usual credit signs, that's probably true.
As far as outdoor storage though, the town does have a special use permit for that, that requires some level of screening. Some level of screening?
Who has that?
Screening, not just, not just opaque screening, to obstruct the use of it.
Hillview restaurants.
Generally.
That's Hillview, right.
Oh, okay.
Cause, I mean, I see outdoor stores down the street, they don't have that. I see outdoor stores on Meyer Zell, they don't have that.
Well, I haven't, I'd have to go back and review whatever.
No, I'm just saying, I, I mean, if I.
To speak.
If, if they're just putting that stripping in the science, I, we'll, we'll do that if you're, if you're gonna ask us to, but I'm just gonna say that I, I would assume that everybody else is gonna have to do it also.
Well, you're here seeking to, to modify a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just, as the town's attorney, just advising you as to what the codes are and what the laws are.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not.
That's all I'm trying to do. I'm not personally imposing any conditions on you.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I'm just saying that if they're, um, if they're supposed to require, I'm willing to.
What, what would be the true definition of screening? Would it be fencing, or would it be landscaping, that sort of thing, or?
That's a good question. The, the screening, there's gonna be screening quite a bit in the future when it comes to some more of the solar applications that come through. Screening's gonna be your new favorite word, right?
No.
But, uh, yeah, it is. And it, it, it's to a certain extent, but, you know, the discretion of the planning board has something to say in that. That's what, that's what you guys are here for. But my point, I guess, one of my points is that if, if, if a portion of your revised site plan application includes outdoor, outdoor vehicle storage, I do believe you'd have to apply for a special use permit.
We're willing to do that.
That's, that's, good. So I think that that would be a good thing to have.
Pat, are you feeling to review this?
Uh, actually, yeah, we've, uh, incorporated some changes already into, into this plan. I guess the one thing that, that I would like to see, if you're going to approve the outdoor storage, that we get some sort of commitment on how many vehicles are going to be put on the site. So that, because it's been a little haphazard through the last few months the way it is now. So if we could commit to having a certain number of vehicles, and I believe you had that on the initial plan.
Yeah.
So if we could just get that on, on the record, if that's gonna be approved, tell me we're gonna allow.
So then I can go through the zoning board first.
I don't see a need in the variance.
For outdoor storage?
Well, I, I'm looking at the B district right now. I don't see outdoor storage uh, uses permitted by special permit, gasoline service station, automotive sales, small animal hospital, lumber building, supply companies, childcare, commercial car wash, commercial recreation. There isn't anything about outdoor storage in the, in the, it's silent on it. On the, in the allowed uses and in the, of the uses by special permit. So.
So.
You know, on, to the allowed uses, it's private clubs, personal service establishments, restaurants, retail sales, retail nurseries and greenhouses are all allowed by right, custom trade, public heating, electrical shops, general commercial bui, business, including farm machinery and service establishments, all allowed by right.
Okay, so with that criteria, outdoor storage is allowed?
Are, are you asking my opinion?
I, I mean, logically, that's the way we, we, if it's, it's not allowed in the district, it's not allowed by special permit.
It's, it's not specifically stated. My own personal opinion is it would be in line with some of the other uses in that allowed use district though. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Tim, could you read that usage again, those, those?
So the, the allowed uses, okay? The allowed uses are a professional office, a financial institution, a medical office and clinic, a private club and lodge, a personal service establishment, restaurants with indoor seating, funeral homes and mortuaries, retail service establishments, retail nurseries and greenhouses, hotels, motels, art, dance, music school and photography studio, dry cleaners and commercial laundries, custom trade, plumbing, heating and electrical shops, general commercial business, including farm machinery and service establishments, and one family dwellings.
And you believe that's in line with the outdoor storage?
Well, I'm just thinking if I'm just gonna sell farm machinery and service establishments, I'm gonna have the combine sitting outside of the farm service. That's all I'm looking at it as.
Yeah, but then you're not paying, somebody's not paying to, um, lease that spot.
Correct.
But that's your own inventory.
Yes.
So. You know, this is a personal inventory.
I think we're splitting hairs. I think it, you know, I see a lot of storage places with buildings outside. I see a lot of, just like Steve said. I see fences without screening. I do see screening if it's in a, in a residential area or something, but I'm, 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 I don't know. I guess that.
So those things could have been, I mean, it could have been, those things could have been approved and probably were approved before. The most recent.
Well, my criteria is those places are not in front of the board right now. This plan is in front of the board.
Oh, I agree.
And I think that if it's something, um, that I contributes to the benefit of our community, then you do it.
Just remember that the landscaping requirement in that business district says, uh, landscaping treatments such as trees and shrubbery shall be located as directed by the planning board. That's what it says.
Okay, as of this time, I've not been directed to put anything, but I.
I understand.
But once again, I do, if we're screening purpose, that's not a problem.
Well, I just, just, it's procedurally, I just wanna make sure that we're doing.
No, I, I, I'm just, I'm just, I just wanna make it clear that I haven't ignored any.
Oh, no, absolutely, no, you're doing, you're doing great.
So I think the outdoor storage is fine with some screening. I think that covers both of the bases for the applicant as well as the public.
Yeah, based on.
Based on my fault. We allow outdoor storage. Homeowners, campers and such. And then if you put landscape screening or some sort of fencing, I think it protects the public as well as the applicant.
Oh, but we, there's, like Tim said, it doesn't, it's nowhere in the code that covers.
Well, we, we talked about the machinery. So, his opinion was that machinery would then classify to the outdoor store.
Well, frankly, Tim's list also didn't include general storage at all. But, but in their current application, they, they went, it did go through it. So it must have been considered, uh, under the general business practices. So if the board was inclined to, the, the board could do a few things, right? They can ask for a little bit more information. They can ask for, um, some of this, some of like this one in particular to be updated. They could ask for some information that Mr. Martin asked for. A, a, excuse me, a commitment to either combine the properties or, or draft an easement, one or the other, I guess, you know. uh, a comm- excuse me, a commitment to either combine the properties or, or draft an easement, one or the other, I guess, you know, probably at the pleasure of the applicant, but it would seem to me, which is in my personal opinion, it seems to me to make more sense to have a site plan approval applied to all of the parcels as one. So maybe that, um, you know, board can move along those actions i- in that way, and ask for more information. Alternatively, you could always, I suppose, you guys are a recommending board, so you're recommending this to the town board anyhow, so you could, you could make those conditions on, in the future, but you're just kicking the can down the road to the town board to address it in that scenario.
When we talk about combined property, or, we're talking about the Hillview and the current storage facility, right?
Yes, sir. I think those are the two separate properties.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that.
We understood, yeah.
You know, we're clear with you, what, uh.
Primarily because it's through the Hillview property that the, the road access to that ba- back property has to rot, there's, there's no other access point for it, except for through some portion of Hillview's parcel, right?
No, it's not, sir.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Where else can you get to it?
We can go right from here.
Around this side.
Yes, sir. And I guess you could do that, even, and we have enough, um, that, this is why we did it really with the easement, I, I don't mean to be pointing and talking in vain, but, uh, wh- wh- we were originally talking about doing an easement at that time, but then we didn't have to because we combined this property, the bar building property with the main property, cause that was at one time a separate property also. And we were gonna do an easement because we, uh, cause we thought the Hillview was gonna be the property, uh, that was, uh, so technically, part of the fire easement's on both properties, so, um, I, I, I don't mind combining the Hillview, and I don't mind providing the easement, whichever the, I, I said, I would even leave it up to the board's pleasure. Well, my brother and sister and I have talked about this, we even met with Linda yesterday, like I said yesterday, because we wanted to see what, what parameters they wanted, and, and to give you, uh, a little history on that, the reason that Hillview isn't part of, cause that was all one parcel at one time, it was about fifty acres. Uh, the reason it was split up is because the town, uh, uh, assessor, Mr. Ruciozo at the time, was frustrated that we had, uh, different parcels doing different things and wanted to separate them. And, and my father, at the time, Dick, separated four Mr. Ruciozo. And, and I was town employee at the time when that happened, and I remember the discussions my father had with Mr. Ruciozo, and they were friendly discussions, there was not a problem, but my dad said, what, what difference does it make? And, uh, Mr. Ruciozo said, well, it just makes it ea- easier for the town, and, and so my father split them up at that time. Have you read it? And, and like I say, I don't, you know, Mrs. Johnson did not seem to be concerned if we joined them or not, it's an administrative, uh, I'm gonna call it an administrative action, that, uh, we have to, quote, have an attorney that caught up and she had to, but it doesn't have to go to the county or anything like that, or, but, to the way I understand it.
Mr. Martin, when you, sorry, when you looked at the, um, at the access here, the fire access, um, do you, are you satisfied with the layout, this proposal, that smaller drawing? Cause we had talked about, or you probably mentioned that, um, that another lane would have to come up on the other side of the Hillview.
Well, currently there's that, uh, automatic slide gate to the, um, west between, uh, the old bar building and the Hillview, there's that automatic gate. Um, the plan was presented, the fencing included, um, a, a gate that's, uh, just a normal, uh, gate that you padlock, and because of the crowdedness of parking and all that, we have to put that other, put that other road in. Um, I think that's the best you're gonna be able to do with the available property that you have.
Could you just, are you talking about the road that is west of the bar building?
No. Currently between the Hillview and the bar building, there's a roadway that goes through, and there's an automatic gate or card access gate.
It's been dotted, it's dotted, I told you that dotted line we've been to before.
It's very clear, uh, sometimes it does become a little congested with what's going on there, so, uh, mustn't requiring the second access in just in case we, we have a problem. The way the property sits, I think that's the only way we can get that back there.
So the way this is illustrated here, there's already one here, an access road?
Yes, correct.
Between the two. And this is newly proposed?
No, there's an access road on the east side of the, of the Hillview.
Right, on the east side, okay.
Okay, there's a, there's an access road on each side of the Hillview.
This is the road here. Look, oh, see, this is, this is the way through the driveway.
Right.
And good, but here.
You're making a big loop right around.
So we proposed it.
Can you read it out there more?
And with Pat's, uh, permission, the way we wanna mark out those roads, take, uh, little like soup cans and put, uh, you know, warm, uh, driveway markers that they use for snowfalls and stuff like that, one's really hit all the time, it's probably, um, we wanna put those in there too. Uh, the, the, I guess the board, I don't know.
That was good with this time, right?
This latest plan is actually improving what we have today.
Okay, so, right, so you're satisfied?
Yeah.
Um, anybody else from the board who'd like to comment on this?
Yeah, one thing, excuse me. I think this, you can't breathe and you can't talk, excuse me. With the proposed smaller two hundred foot building going in. Okay, is that gonna infringe at all, uh, fire department access to the back of the three hundred foot building?
No, we got, we're, we're maintaining the twenty six feet.
All right, if you maintain the twenty six feet, how's that truck, that truck is then gonna back out?
No, no, they're, they're, at the back end.
If you look on your photos there, you can, if you show, show the photos that you have of it, the probably imagery. I mean, we've got the road, the fair goes all around.
Yeah, I'm saying, it's very confusing, that's more.
To get back to this point.
Yeah, you put two more buildings here.
Yeah, there're gonna be space.
Shorter, so you go around that one.
If that's the question.
Yeah, I think it needs to be done either.
Okay, so, so in other words, in other words, the truck would go between the buildings. As this standing facing north, as the drive, truck is driving north, he'd be making a turn to the west, making a, another hard turn to the south and come along the west side of the three hundred foot building.
He could do that, or he could also turn to the east. Because we have, we, we have space here, so we do the same thing.
Okay, now.
See what I'm saying?
No.
Well.
Okay, okay, all right, I see what you're saying.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I personally would like to see it delineated a little bit better, um, because there's a lot of, well, this is what we're gonna do, well, this is what we're gonna do.
Well, we, we are.
Um, I think it would help this board, um, to be able to actually see a little bit more of that actual proposed road going in there, where you're actually going to propose your buildings and where you wanna future expand. Um, and then I also have a question as how that, uh, future building that's right in back of the Hillview is gonna impact your parking? Because when you have those three boxes on top of each other, it almost looks like you're putting a row of three units back there. But the one, the middle one is just the, um, delineated unit, and then it looks like the parking behind that is actually just for that storage facility, and I'm fearful that, you know, by doing that, we're creating a parking issue, um, which already, there already exists a parking issue around the Hillview.
You are gonna lose a couple parking spaces with the new configuration of the fire lane coming in on the east side.
Yeah, and that's where I.
No, we won't.
You know, that small building in the back.
They'll pull it, there's, there's still way back.
No, according to Belucci's drawing, he, he took off four parking spaces.
Oh, okay. I, I thought, I, I just know how they park.
It's on Pat's drawing right there.
Yeah, okay.
I think for me, I'd like to see the whole site delineated a little bit better.
If, if I could just, the one thing I'm really concerned about tonight is, I, I would, uh, I would be glad to update all that, but the, the, the thing that, um, timely in my, and my brother and sister's concerns are to, uh, we'd like to be able to start doing some work on the other building. I mean, I, I hold up tearing off that porch, so that I'm gonna buy a demo porch for the porch of the building, and, and then have a permit that would improve the demo plus the, uh, remodel and all that. Um, I, I'm sure you have some concerns about, you know, and when people change uses of the building, what they might end up using it for finally. Um, the only thing we're interested in doing is, uh, you know, I don't know if you wanna slap contingency on us or something like that, the only thing we're interested in doing is doing the storage business. Although, uh, several people have asked me to put a strip club in there, I've told them no, no, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. That was a joke, that was a joke, that was a joke. Okay. Um, my brother was one of the main instigators of that, from what I understand.
It's wrong, I told you under the wall, sorry, no.
But, uh, no, I mean, uh, uh, it's, uh, I would be glad, uh, on a, on a, a list from the score to put the requirements that you would like to see, uh, if, if, uh, if we could, uh, be allowed to, uh.
You're referring to the indoor storage of the bar restaurants?
Yes, yes.
Start some sort of storage.
On that, and I, I'd, uh.
You're not changing the footprint, you're actually taking away from the front porch, but other than that, everything's gonna be, put it inside?
Well, we like, I'm not, yes, most, ninety-nine point nine percent of it's inside, we might, we're gonna do something over the front of it, I just don't know what yet.
Okay, but that'd probably be more of a decorative.
Yes, yes, it, it won't be anywhere.
How about the other, uh, storage building, that's the twenty by two hundred, would, would that be the next logical start?
Yes, uh, that, that would try, we're, we're, we have time on it, we wait till the spring anyway, we get the concrete and important things of that nature. And so by that time, I figure we could work those other issues out with y'all.
Right, um, my opinion is that you're presenting a full, a whole plan here, that one storage unit is probably what's come, is basically what's caused in all the discussion, notice we haven't discussed anything in, uh, the other building that you're trying to fix up. Um, so.
Well, we were trying to give you a, a whole summary of what we're doing.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely, um.
I don't know if you're allowed to piecemeal it all or not. I think from a legal, legal point of view, I think it'd be difficult for the board to construct a motion that they could do a contingent, to contingently allow you to start constructing a, a building that may or may not be part of the future approval of the site plan. That being said, I, I don't know if what your current site plan exists, what it would prevent you from taking down a front porch on your building.
Well, I have to, I mean, how many residents you want me to buy, that's what I'm saying, I, uh, uh.
Yeah, I know, but.
After, after my discussion with Tim, I, I had, I had to buy a demo permit, uh, we were ready to demounce it recently, un- unfortunately, some of the parking problems that we've had have involved that front porch, um, and so it, it needs to be taken down.
I, I understand what you're saying in terms of, you know, buying extra permits and stuff, I just don't see.
I'll tell you what, we'll buy the, I mean, I, you'll tell you, I've already purchased the permits for the build to do the inside work, because it was just, it'd be easy for me to, once, you know, pay so little, just hearing and whatever, and I, I get the permit off of. Um, I, I think it's a lower grade of use, there's, there's a lot of work to be done on that building, I mean, I, if, if, if he can grant me the permit to start the work, and I'll gamble that you're gonna allow me to do it, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't see why you would have a problem as long as we, uh, as long as we keep working, we're, we're willing to do that.
How sensitive is the word inside, and how does that lay out, how do you, uh, there's, just what size rooms, what size storage?
There's a, he's got a plan. I can show you on my phone if you wanna look at it.
Is there two levels in there as well?
No, no.
There's one level of storage?
Only one level, there is an upstairs, but it's only a small area above the restaurant.
I mean, all storage on the first floor, right?
All on the first floor, it's an eight inch concrete floor because it was used for, um, cars and things of that nature for repairs. Technically, it was a storage for, uh, painted cars and stuff like that, you know, before it was even the restaurant.
Okay, so people would have access to the main front door, and then after that, there's small, like locker type, large locker type?
Yes, there'd be like five by tens and ten by tens, aisleways, things of that nature.
Okay.
And we have to, we have to work out a, uh, sprinkler system plan, which, it's already sprinkled, but it's been disconnected, we will reconnect, we know we have to reconnect it, but that, we feel is all part of the, uh, building from the process. And I think this board has to concern itself.
Does, uh, Mr. Ryder know exactly what we need? I mean, you were talking.
No, I, I asked for a list, I asked for a list from the board.
Cause I know, I know we've talked.
There's been several conversations here, and I would prefer that you give me a, a checklist of how many people have.
Cause one of the main things with, with the fire, and I can see that, and he doesn't have an executive to lot, um, what I hate to see, I'm in business myself, and the way things are going, let's be honest, we don't know how many buildings can stay open, we don't know. So if people want to go into business, we have to make it, it's a way, it's positive, we've got people waiting, how we can do it, I don't know, give them a list, let's get on with it, you know?
Tom, correct me if you think I'm mistaken here, but I think with the way this is being presented to us right now, we need to fix these few things, you know, we talked about screening the outdoor storage.
Well, once again, can we do that with landscaping, cause I would prefer to do it with landscaping, and the reason being is, I wanted to, uh, break that up to the people sitting in the restaurant anyways.
Right.
You know, I'd rather have some nice tree plantings along the fence line.
Oh, yeah, I know what, probably like tall rocks or anything.
No, 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 yeah, no, no, I'm talking, yeah, no, I understand, but I, I mean, just weaving that stuff through there, that, once again, that doesn't do much, but I would rather.
Just in general, just in general, I would.
I understand, I, I totally understand.
You want a list, I'm trying to.
Okay.
But yes, landscaping would work.
Would work, so generally you propose a, a screen.
Additional lighting requirements?
I mean, not, 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 not for what's in front of us.
Well, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Not showing that here.
So you mean, it, it means as far as a special use, I get it.
My, I just can't read.
Gentlemen, you may comment, but.
We're wondering if there are any, uh, additional lighting requirements or issues, my question, I can't read this, it's so small, so, and the others, the full size drawings, it's an old drawing, doesn't show half of the stuff.
I suggest something, these drawings are master plan drawings, what I would suggest for everybody's clarity, including myself, is to come up, come back with a full blown site plan, propose what you wanna do.
Yeah.
I, I can, I cannot follow those drawings, so I'm not sure, if you're asking anything for me to approve, I'm not in a position to approve anything.
Understood.
So if we have a full blown site plan, this will become, it'll be a, you know, pictures worth a thousand words kind of thing.
Okay.
Landscaping plan, where's it gonna be, where's the fence, what's the fence gonna look like, is it, how's it gonna be landscaped or screened, you know, I, I would suggest, and I, I think Mr. Ryder has offered, to, uh, combine the lots, I personally think that's a, that results in a cleaner, like site.
Absolutely.
It's just a, 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 an opinion, but that's, that is, that's what I'm telling you, and I, and I think it'll be much, much easier for the board and for Mr. Ryder, so once that's all clarified, they can go through, you know, like that.
Right, but it's gonna have, I, I believe it's gonna have to come to next one's board.
So if we were to make a motion, um, our motion would be to, uh, table pending, uh, full, uh, site, full site, uh, map?
Yeah, okay. But we need to, and still like to offer him that list, things I'm trying to hash out what we have discussed. But we need to, and still like offer him that list of things, I'm trying to hash out what we have discussed, so we can have a, a nice list, so he knows what's up there.
What to include on the site plan?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to.
Good, I pull it up, put it. So, right, so, very good, site plan, sorry Sandy, list.
Okay.
The, the, the first item would be screening for the outdoor storage.
And that, that could be, uh, uh, either opaque screening or.
Landscreen.
Landscreen, could be either or.
Yeah, Bill, just so you know, in, in the, if you go under the special use permit, that would be like for outdoor building storage or other outdoor storage. I'm not sure you can get there from the, the B district, but let's say you, you were to use that same criteria, or if you said you feel it is a special use permit for that use, that the, the criteria is a fence of at least six foot tall or another form of screening approved by the planning board. So, he's correct, in the fact that they could have one or the other, but then the other thing is, um.
Well, wait, can I ask a question, Tim, the, the fence itself?
It could be. But if I have to have this, the mesh in it.
Okay, alright, so we could just, we could install the mesh in it.
So I'm saying that, that section, um, three sixty-one thirty-six affords you those two options at the discretion of the planning board. The other thing it says is, um, um, vehicle storage, uh, must be screened from view from any adjacent residential property. That is the only other criteria that would come into play for his use. But I'm not, I'm not totally sold on the fact that that necessarily applies to that, but if you wanted to add on the side of caution, that's the criteria.
Alright, so, there are two options. And, uh, as Tim stated, so let me bring back your, um, your site plan, your formal site plan. Um, have screening of some kind illustrated on there. Need to, to combine the two parcels, the existing Hillview diner parcel and your existing storage parcel.
Okay.
Okay? Um, we, you need to fully layout things such as lighting, um.
What, uh?
That there's gonna be any lighting around the building?
There, there'll be lighting on the buildings.
Okay, it, it could be depicted on a plan.
Okay.
But it just should be shown.
Okay.
You know, as Bob said, it, um, need to have all the, all the details.
Yeah.
So this thing can just be done, you know, moved, whatever's done. Right?
A little more on the list?
I'm just asking, I'd, I'd like to give a complete.
Right, right, that's what we're, lighting plan. Partly, uh, making sure that we're, um, agreement with the fire inspectors for fire lanes and that sort of thing? Can I do that?
Showing how we plan.
I think the biggest thing was combining the lock, I think, cause then that opens up everything else, and it starts to fall into place.
Yeah.
So, but then the screen, the outdoor storage came up, which was, kinda got to discussions of the screen. Uh, so lighting, fire plan, um.
Parking.
Parking, yeah, parking.
Parking, yeah. Working, parking layout, I haven't really looked at that.
Well, parking. How many spots are needed for this?
Well, they, technically, they park next to their UV.
But for the restaurant as well, and.
If they park next to the UV, it's right in the fire lane, right?
No, that's twenty-six feet, that's why we agreed on twenty-six feet. So they increased it.
Oh, okay, I, I just wanna be sure.
No, that's why we agreed on twenty-six feet. The both of them are, I thought.
Are we parking to the extent that you can, that you're restricted? Restricted from the fire lane is a concern.
Right.
We want, I think, I want people parked in the fire lane.
I think part, part of it is where you have the, your new building show behind the Hillview, it's kind of, it's, it's not. Part of, part of the, it's just an illustrative type of thing, but where you have the building behind the Hillview, the other lines depicting your drive lanes are so dark.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll take care of it.
It's just, just for clarity, it helps a lot.
Okay.
Um, Sarah, you had for her?
Yeah, well, I, you know, there are things that are included on there, I would like, um, a better delineation of like the whole master plan as far as the amount of buildings that, uh, you are proposing, your outdoor storage, where that's gonna be laid out. Um, again, it's that building directly behind the Hillview, have that actually, um, delineated a little bit better. Uh, my recommendation would be to push it back if the, um, properties are gonna be combined to allow parking around the Hillview, and then you push your storage, you, you know, your storage, that building back.
We can't put it in the easement though, there's an easement.
That's true, but I guess you could probably go on the other side of the easement.
That's where the deep, the difference in grade is, he says, pretty steep.
Okay, it's too great? Okay, okay.
You probably put it above, the only place you could put it.
Okay, so, um, you know, this just seems, you, cause you're cutting off an awful lot of parking by doing that. So those are the things that I would like to see.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with the actual improvements that you wanna do on the whole stor, you know, the, the storage building, uh, the former bar restaurant.
The bar building?
Yeah, um, you know, as long as it meets fire code and whatnot.
Yeah.
But it's a little slight layout.
I mean, I've already applied for a permit, I, I, once again, I, I'm asking, can, can I go to the building inspector and, and proceed on that?
I mean, I, I think the way the board is sounding is that we're really not opposed to the project. We're just looking for clarity on the plan, so that we can move forward with what we're presenting, I mean, you presented this entire plan to us tonight.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with me and all your, uh, I, I just wanna, this, this is this is a prime time for indoor work to be done, in this type of year, and I, I'm just asking if, if, if we could start that in, uh, like the first of January or something.
The board's not gonna be able to give you official approval on that.
I'm not saying.
The best you can do is probably something along these lines, is, is anybody on the board currently have any issues that they need to discuss with regards to converting the bar into general, to, to storage?
I don't have any issues, that's another thing I was gonna say.
No one has really raised any issues on that.
No, no, I know.
That's as far as you're gonna get in terms of the board telling you anything tonight on that issue.
But, but, I'm, and that's what I'm asking for, has anybody got an issue with that, and I haven't heard anybody yet, and.
The facade on the, um, indoor storage, uh, color scheme, the thing of that nature, is that gonna match the Hillview color scheme and roofing and that sort of thing?
Yes, yes, it already, yeah.
Some of it already, okay.
Yeah.
And the new porch or whatever you put out front?
Yes, we got all, everything's got green ropes and every, well, I mean, at least green trim on, on the one building, we can, you know, total green, we'll put a screen. And, uh, and the, uh, and we have a, uh, dark brown and light brown.
A demolition permit already, correct?
No, I don't, I have one for the, uh, for the other house. The old, uh, my grandfather's old house.
But the permit you have now, you say you're doing interior work?
He paid for it, it's not issued yet.
I am an issue to, that's why I'm, I'm asking for some serious winking here, so we can.
Well, I think the demolition could be perceived with, could, could it not, Tim?
I mean, that's more of your, again, I think you're, you know, no one's really had a concern.
Board doesn't get to make that determination, right?
No, I'm not, I'm just gonna.
I'm telling you that if they don't get to make.
You know what you gotta do, if you do it, and, uh, somebody complains, apologize.
I mean, that's not a good recommendation either.
No, but, uh, Steve's, I'm talking to Steve.
And I will, I'll advise you of this.
You know, obviously we'll have to comply with the.
No, I'm not saying anything, it's not already, all the time.
For the store of business?
It's already there, it's on the building.
Okay, back to the list.
There, take a look at the law that has to do with the site plan review. Look at your compo, there's a section here called Submission of Site Plan and Additional Information. There's a list of thirty-two things that would be on your site plan. Now, every one of these things is probably not applicable for yours, but it might be a good place to start.
Okay. Well, is there anything else you could, uh, any list that you made, is anything else we missed?
He's there at all, right there. I, I doubt all thirty-two will be relevant, but, but, but some of it, some of it, I'm sure a lot of it will.
Jitsu turn, pink root, pink root.
No, I mean, truthfully, uh, uh, those.
Truthfully.
Usually when someone's submitting a plan for something like this, it has, it has a much more comprehensive site plan.
Yeah.
It, I mean, there's towns that are gonna be requiring color schemes, there's towns that are gonna wanna see dimensions of every building on there, is that, there's towns that are gonna want every single topographical layout of the drainage, all of that stuff.
And it's all.
That's so cinematic, huh?
I think the board's doubtful.
They're probably there.
On, on the original, on the original selection. For drainage. It's tough for, for all.
Wait, now, if you have all that stuff already created, then. So, so timely, why, I don't know if we got answers. The demolition could be executed, that permit?
Yep.
And then Mr. Ryder, you can start on that, and perhaps by next month, you could be back with this checklist, with your plan, your master plan?
Yeah, we'll do that.
So, we'll, 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 we'll.
Don't say master plan, site plan.
Site plan.
Uh, okay, it was full-blown site plan.
Full-blown.
Full-blown site plan.
Can I make the, uh, motion that this be, uh, tabled, that the project be tabled upon a supplemental of a, a full site plan?
I'll second that.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I didn't miss it. I was laughing at this.
I would like to make a motion that this project be tabled until, uh, supplemental of a full site plan.
And I was looking.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
What's your favor, Tim?
Third, third.
Tim, do you know, I'll tell you a moment.
I can tell you in a minute.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. The meeting is held for the January, but the deadline is submission in June, fortunately, it's Friday.
Then we'll make the motion, so we improve that. Alright, the motion, okay? You know what you need to do, right? Alright, we'll see you next Monday.
I'll make the motion that you're gonna be.
Oh, yeah, good.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I, can you, uh, give me a minute? Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yes.